Okay, I'm going to call the Candia School Board meeting Tuesday, June fifth. Six oh one two. We do not have a student for the pledge as they were not feeling well. So do you wanna just stand for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval posting we've got. And Rebecca is here tonight. Excited to hear all about end of year at Pinkerton.
Yeah, there's not much going on right now, but we've had in the month of May, there were a bunch of awards ceremonies and inductions for all the honor societies. And there were a couple of band concerts. We so seniors senior exams are this week and underclassmen exams are gonna be next week. They're going to be, I think it's the eleventh through the sixteenth. And graduation is gonna be Friday. Senior banquet is tonight. And I was told to ask you guys like what would you like to hear about for next year?
I mean, I think you do pretty good.
Yeah.
Sporting activities, what's going on?
Good update as to what's happening.
You know, events, plays, sports events.
Yeah.
If a Candia student does something awesome.
Yeah. Highlight that.
No, she does a great job.
Yeah, anybody? All right, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes. First is the minutes from May sixth. Do you have a motion to accept?
Move that we approve the minutes from May sixth?
Any a second? Any discussion? All those in favor to accept the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have our non-public. Oh, yeah. Do we have a motion to accept the non-public minutes from?
Motion.
Okay, second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have an opportunity for the public to address the board. There'll be another chance at the end. Superintendent's updates.
Yep, just a couple of additions to the report. Last week, the principals and I met with the bus manager for a student, Jessica Meyer. And Sean Pendable, who is the area transportation supervisor. Our SAU is part of his district. We talked about us, we created a schedule for turning in all our information so they can start building the bus routes for next year. Jessica said she believes we might be able to see a rough draft by the end of June, first week in July. So our goal is to have everything finished in all three districts by August first. Even though they have until August tenth, we wanna try to get that information out to our parents as soon as possible. A couple of days after that, I met with Ben Henry, who's the vice president for our area for first student. And we essentially went over some more money that we're holding back. And we worked on trying to schedule an appointment, get our lawyers together to, because that issue still is open and hasn't been resolved yet. And I saw.
Anybody have any questions?
Could I just clarify something?
Yes.
So I know that it says in my report that I submitted the ESEA consolidated application. I did do that, but they sent it back because I they pushed out the timeline. But Stacy and I did send out the IDEA consolidated application. Just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Administrators' reports. Any questions on those?
I have a question.
Okay.
Kimberly, so the Pinkerton start time is pretty much defunct now, basically, the start time committee?
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
Wow, not next year.
Yeah.
The next step is, as I said in my report, we're we're meeting September ninth. And we are going to hear from first student, get their feedback on what a consolidation of all the bus routes for all the sending districts, what it might look like. And I assuming they're gonna bring us like dollar amounts, you know, what it might save us, that kind of thing. And then the second half of the meeting is we are going to, and I forgot the name, I wanna say it's Busware, but I could be wrong. Affirm that they work in soft, bus tracking software. And they're gonna give us a presentation to see what it might look like as well, so that's on September ninth.
With regard to the.
But as far as the start times themselves, as Dr. Harper said, it's put on the back burner for a while.
So it's not coming back anytime soon?
I wouldn't assume so, no. And again, as I think I reported at the last meeting, our last meeting, only two districts, or three districts, including Fremont, sent out surveys.
Only thing I wanted to say was I love that little art project with the self-portraits. And that was really awesome.
Yeah.
And Ag Day, of course. I mean, everything, the Spring Arts Festival, drama performance, everything.
Last night we had our learning celebration too, so that was key. The school was filled again last night.
Awesome. I wonder. I wanted to get like a name of the vendor, Meg would probably have that, right? The name of one of the vendors?
The vendors for the Ag Day.
Oh, yeah, she has a whole list.
I'll just send a little thank you.
Yeah, yeah, the whole, the kids all did thank you next to me.
Oh, they did?
They did.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
My other question for the special ed budget for next year, has it changed much?
No.
I just noticed your.
The number, yeah, the numbers have certainly increased. And I think it's something to kinda keep an eye on and see sort of how that impacts the the year after. If we continue to grow at that rate, I think we'd have to really kinda think about that, but right now we're doing okay.
In-house, we can manage?
Yes, not much, I don't think we could do much more than that with the staff that we have, but we can right now.
That was it for me.
But let people know where I was looking for parent professionals if you know anyone.
Yep, yep.
Please.
I will do that.
Is it, are we allowed to publicly ask what they start at or?
Well, we have the new.
It's in the.
Let's look at the new contract, yeah, yep, they're in. It's on the website, but I it's new, so I don't know off the top of my head, but we can look.
Case I know anybody.
But I will say, we continue to have the growth that we had this year and again, a lot of move-ins.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Reports of standing committees, we're waiting till after the retreat to do building, correct?
Yes.
And then Dana always has his policies. Budget's quiet. Next old business, staffing. Did you guys have a chance to review Becky's slides from her PowerPoint? Her last meeting with the.
The different options.
The different options, the no teacher, the one teacher, the two teachers.
And one of my missions, mission was to find out the cost of a teacher for next year. Step five teacher masters, and that's our placeholder number. Salary and benefits is a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Anybody wanna discuss, make a motion?
I mean, I pretty much feel the same way, what I said last time. I just wanna say, I understand that there's a tremendous amount of effort, thought and time that goes into formulating the budgets and making the decisions about staffing. And it's done in the best interest of the children, but we did get two default budgets the last two years. So I think the voters are trying to tell us something. I don't personally think it's absolutely mission critical that we hire a new teacher at this point in time. And I'm very concerned that if we put that in the budget, it's not gonna sit well with a lot of the voters. And we'll be pretty much ensuring that we have a default budget for a third year in a row, which is what we don't want, so it's kind of on that, on that.
Stephanie, was I gonna update you on, because I had to do staff placements by June first, according to the CEA. So did you want me to just show you what?
What you have?
What the decision is at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. I'm just gonna pull that slide up and just outline the one that we did. Dana, can you hit the bottom button on that light switch? Just so that you know what we did, that's all.
Okay.
Just want you fully informed. This is gonna turn on. The suspense, right?
It's thinking.
All right, so this was the slide that I had shown you with current staffing. So that's the one that we put in. So we will have for next year, three kindergarten, three first grades. We'll go down to two for second grade. We currently have three first grades, we'll go to two, there'll be seventeen at this point in each class. And then third grade remain at two, fourth grade at two, fifth grade will move our current fourth grade into two. So that'll be like eighteen, nineteen. I know for sure that there's one student that we're losing for homeschooling for that one, so it'll be eighteen, nineteen instead of two at nineteen. And then we'll keep our middle school model of the four teachers and having kids rotate, which will make some smaller classes for seventh grade. But I think looking at overall what's best for kids with the number of staff that we have, this is what it would be.
So currently in fourth grade, you have three?
Currently in fourth grade, we have three, yeah, and that would move to two for fifth grade, yeah. And what we're gonna do is we have a fifth, sixth team. That's how we're doing it. So the kids are not going to be in the same classroom all day. We figure, you know, we're moving to a little bit bigger classes. We're gonna also have them move so that they're experiencing four different teachers as well during the day. So it'll be a team that mirrors our seventh, eighth team, but it'll be a fifth, sixth team.
Becky, is this year's fourth grade class the cohort that we want to strike out three for?
Yes, it is.
So next year?
There'll be two.
And fifth grade, there'll be two?
Yeah. Yeah.
Could you, so in my brain, the behavior chart for, there was one group that has like three, three, three. That will be grade five next year.
Correct.
That's grade four this year.
Yes.
Correct.
Who's got the nineteen kids in each class?
Uh, that's that grade that has three, three, three.
Would be grade five.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 That's.
Let me ask you, let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Do we have the money in the budget?
That's more a question for him.
Well, I mean, if we look at our surplus.
Bill, the ant.
I mean, so that the voters know that we're not trying to.
It's it's not budgeted. Okay, I kinda don't know what Dana mentioned. However, we have, just not in Candia, but since we're here, since I've been here, I wanna say we've done it once, at least once, maybe twice. Where we've had to hire a teacher because of numbers. To to in order to address an issue, whether it's usually a number of students. The dollars, you know, for a fund balance, I didn't bring that info with me, just still working on it. You have, in order to use fund balance, you have to prepay a lot to free up the money to pay for the position. We theoretically, we would have enough, but I don't know if we'd have enough to prepay. In other words, we'd have enough money in the budget or in the fund balance, but I'm not sure if we could prepay enough.
One of the things that would make it difficult, I think, and please don't get me wrong, I would love to have another position. But one of the things that would make it difficult is this would need to be advertised, I would assume, as a one-year position.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
So to get a one-year position, especially for, I know Stephanie, you're thinking fifth grade when you're talking about this, would be very difficult.
Cause the job that the pool, the teacher pool is thin as it is.
Not that I'm not willing to try.
And so it's even higher, it's harder to get somebody for a one-year.
For one year. So K through third is one qualification for education, right?
No, there are some that are early education that are your your lower grades. But most of our teachers are elementary certified, which is typically K through six. Some still have a K through eight certification.
So may I reword my question? So we don't have to go back to the voters for more money, is there enough money for that one position for next year?
Yes. If we, if everything went right as far as prepaying and we'd have to look at everything we have in the budget and prepay it.
I think that's part of the reason why we have a surplus this year is because we were afraid we were on a default. So we prepaid for a lot last summer.
Yeah.
Like you'll notice like math and it.
You would prepay your math and focus, your wonders, all the custodial supply, anything that you can try to capture. Whether it would equal a hundred, I'm not sure.
No.
We still have the SRO.
Do a lot of our.
The SRO dollars is still there, that's still in the budget, so that's thirty-three thousand.
We don't have to go back to the.
No, we don't have to go back to the voters.
Okay, we need more money.
My my biggest concern is I just. It's really hard for the public to understand what's going on in schools nowadays. And it's really hard to teach. Let's say, for example, the current fourth grade going into fifth grade where they have that behavior of three, three, three.
That's a big transition.
You're disrupting all day long, like how how are these kids supposed to learn? And now you're gonna do two? That's just hard. But and I understand the voters and I understand if I wasn't as involved as I was, I would be like, yeah, who cares? I'm not who cares. We did it when I was a kid, what's the problem? You know, you don't, they, people don't understand what happened to.
Now, that's kind of my point, like whether they understand it or not, if the perception is that we're spending too much and they just say, all right, default. Which I think would happen, because we're hiring somebody new and this has been an issue, oh, staffing level, staffing level. We're gonna end up with a default, which is what we don't want, so it's like we run that risk.
One of the things, and it's not ideal.
Default from that of all.
One of the things to think about is we pre-buy as much as we can, start the year with two teachers. See how it goes so that we can then have evidence to say, well, we tried it with two, but we had this problem about giving away students' names or anything. You know, significant increase in discipline, whatever, there are benchmarks you could use. That's a pot, I mean, it's not ideal by any means, but it's, yeah, we tried it, it didn't work. It's kinda like if we had, let's say another twenty kids moved into kindergarten.
Yeah.
Right, in other words, we can't control that, so we would need to add a teacher, so. It's it's a it's a rock and a hard place.
It's a very much a rock and a hard place.
I just look at it, knowing how things are gonna go next year, we're gonna end up in a default budget again next year. So if we can prepay and we're not going back to the voters for more money.
No, we wouldn't be going back for more money?
And we can swing it to get the teacher's position.
I think what Becky, and I think we also have to consider what Becky mentioned earlier, is we would have to post for a one year.
Yeah.
Now, like Becky said, we'll try, we'll do our best, beat every budget we can.
Yeah.
But it might be we end up here anyway.
Right, it's possible.
So when we did the kindergarten, we posted a one year, right? Or Spanish was a one, I can't remember.
Kindergarten, we just hired.
It's hired, that was a numbers.
That was a numbers issue, that was easier to explain.
So I understand, we post for one year.
Yeah.
And then next year, it becomes part of the default budget?
No.
No. Because the position is outside of the default, this year's default budget.
The next year would.
So next, so in twenty-six, twenty-seven, it would be in the operation, you know, the column to the far right when we do our budget. It would be in that column because it would be a new expense. If it got approved by voters, then the two years later.
Two years later.
It then goes into default.
That's what makes it harder to hire for is this person is only guaranteed this one year. Like typically, when you're hired by a school district, yeah, you're not guaranteed more years, but you know, you do well, you know you're coming back. You don't have that same assurance with a one-year position. Not necessarily the same quality of candidate that we would need a high-quality candidate for that.
I don't know, I think. I think one is needed desperately.
I'm in favor of the one.
It's that behavior piece, the three, three and three really bothers me and having that be the biggest-sized classroom.
Well, that's your biggest transition year. You know, I'm thinking back to when I was a kid, you're going from fourth to fifth, and that's a huge transition year.
We're gonna have to be really mindful with next year's budget proposal to skim off other, I don't know how. I thought we tried pretty good last year. But we have a new, oh, we have a new business administrator. Sorry.
Cindy will be at our retreat.
Cindy will be at our retreat and she was, she's been, what was her title?
She was assistant assistant BA this year prior to that, she was our accountant.
Yeah, she worked for Karen forever, she's gonna be awesome. So. I think she has a better feel for what's behind the numbers on the budget, so hopefully we'll do that.
So you don't need, you would take your action at the retreat?
We don't need to.
Yeah, but you could vote for it and try and go to the retreat to see if the math works.
We, yeah, we could wait for the retreat, see if the math works.
I think it might be better that way.
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather have all the numbers.
Yeah.
That way we make an educated decision.
I would too.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we, I know there's other options up there where the teachers were shuffled around in different classes, if there was an extra one, whatever, like second, and the next row had three instead of two. So if we did opt to hire someone, is like you're concerned that it's that one class that has the three, three and three that needs the extra teacher? But is that where the extra teacher would definitely go? Or you guys make that own call on your own, so.
It's funny because I was thinking first grade.
Really?
So.
Yeah. First grade going into second?
First grade going into second.
Well, that has a four and one of the category, yeah, they're, I think they're equally as hard.
You go to here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the one that has second grade.
Either one, but maybe it's easier to control little ones, I don't know.
I don't know.
One would think.
One would think, not necessarily the case.
I just. So we did a thing in the fall for presentation parents on, what was it? It wasn't bullying, it wasn't. Cell phone use, what was it? And like nobody came.
Bullying.
Bullying, bullying, okay.
Yeah, last year we did the internet safety one in the spring and nobody came.
Yeah.
Literally, nobody came.
Yeah.
We had a staff member and I think one.
Maybe we can do one on supporting your school with behavior issues type thing in the fall? If there's such a thing? I don't know how you'd exactly word that, I'm not very good with words that way, but yeah, okay. All right, so we'll table that till June fourteenth, eight AM? Will that be?
Be posted.
It'll be posted, will it be recorded or? Probably not.
Probably not, it's a Saturday, the minutes will be posted.
Okay. But it's open to the public?
Yeah, it's a meeting, it's a board meeting.
Sure as a pact.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
It's Saturday morning.
Well, it might be raining, so.
Yeah.
The way it's been rolling.
Next is testing results.
It's up in mind. So this is a weird time to be doing this. Because typically, we do like early March, so you're looking at your winter data and kinda I'm giving you the action that we're taking through the spring. So this is gonna look and feel a little bit different than it usually does, so just kind of a heads up on that. But you know, just a reminder, they're in the left-hand side, just in case anyone's forgotten, twenty twenty-five School of Excellence. And Steph, the data wall picture is just for you, I know how much you like the data wall.
I love that data wall.
I start every staff meeting like this as well, just reminding everyone of our vision to be a model school for personalizing learning for every student. Where we all have a high moral commitment to the learning of all students within our collaborative learning culture. And my expectations around that are to have that collab culture of collaboration. We all have to learn from each other, monitor our progress and make our adjustments accordingly, which is what we're doing every day. So we're gonna go over the assessment results, so you're gonna see the SAS results from last year, because we haven't even talked about those. Cause usually we talk about those in March with our winter NWA data. And you're gonna see preliminary results for this year. Now, one of the things to think about when you're looking at the preliminary results is that includes all of the kids who took it here. But you saw Stacy's move-in numbers, we've had so many kids move in toward the end of the year who also took it here that we didn't give them most of their instruction. So this isn't just our kids right now, it's just when I pull a report, I get all the kids. So it's not the, it's not gonna be the same numbers that you'll see once the state goes through and assigns who were actually responsible for educating. So it's not the, it's not gonna be the same numbers that you'll see once the state goes through and assigns who were actually responsible for educating. So just so that you're aware, you're not really comparing apples to apples in this when we compare the two years. Um, and then the NWA is our winter data, we're actually taking it this week, so next week I'll have the spring data. Um, and then a instructional priority review, um, of what this year's instructional priorities were and then next steps. So the SAS as a reminder, um, that's the state testing, we we administer, it says March through June is the window, we do it in May. Um, it's grades three through eight, it's on the computer, ELA in writing is one score, math is another score, and then grades five and eight take science. Um, and really what you're looking at when you're looking at this is it's the state accountability test, but you're really looking at curriculum and instruction. More so than you're looking at individual students when we look at this. Um, there is a student achievement component to it, but we really look at our NWA for the growth factor. Um, so this is the twenty twenty-five preliminary results, so the white bar is what the state was last year. I can't even see the state so far this year because it's not released anywhere yet. Um, the middle bar was what we were in twenty twenty-four, so you're looking at white was the state. Green bar was us, on the left is math, middle is reading, right is science. Um, twenty twenty-five is the kind of brighter one to the right, again preliminary, that includes. All the kids we have, there may be some that moved in that, woo, they're bumping us up, there may be some that moved in that, woo, bumping us down. And we're so small that just those few kids have a big impact on our percentages. Um, so I don't know truly what they'll be, but looking at this, they're pretty consistent with last year. Um, you know, there's a couple points, but who knows what that reading one will do, if it'll go up or down, same with all of them really. Science, I'm pretty confident it's gonna be higher than last year, if you look at that bar, which is great, um, because that is something we focused on this year. Um, this is that school, that district comparison one, um, and I know Dana, you had asked last year during the retreat. That we include a few different towns as well, um, so I added those in, I added, uh, Deerfield, uh, Raymond. Henneker, Epsom, I think were the new ones that I added in there. Um, so looking at this, you can see we're above the state in four of the grade levels, this is math, by the way. You can't really see that at the top, my screen's down too low. Um, and significantly above in three of them, and then we're slightly below the state in two of them. Um, and that's grades six, so that's our current grade seven students. Um, and then grade eight who are in high school now. Because remember, this is last year's, I can't do this for this year yet, nothing's out. Um, so this is looking at us, the light blue bar is last year percentage of students proficient and above, so level three or four. And then the darker blue is so far what this year is showing. This is math again.
So this is the current grade four.
Yes.
Yes, this is this year's.
Current grade. The dark blue is current grade four, so this is not a cohort, so you're not looking at the current grade four and how they did last year. You're looking at last year's grade four and this year's grade four.
The dark blue is this year's fourth grade, the white blue is last year's fourth grade.
So last year, if you wanna know what this year's grade four is fifty-one percent, last year there was sixty-six percent. You'd have to go to grade three the year before. So remember grades six and eight we talked about were significantly below the state in twenty twenty, or not, they weren't significantly. They were below the state when I looked up here, right? But you can see that they have made significant progress this year, those particular grade levels, so hopefully we won't be falling below the state this year. Um, this is the level three and four, Dana, this is another one for you. The bottom part of the bar is the level three and the top part is the level four, I know you like to see those broken out. Um, so that's where they're, again, this is preliminary too. And again, it's preliminary, so.
So, it's because they don't add up, because there are the two other categories, right, so.
Ab- absolutely, yep, yep. Yeah, and I can show you that if you want, the next time around, I can do the one, two, three, four. Uh, this is reading, um, same thing, so well, reading, writing, it's ELA. Um, so you can see we're above the state again in four grade levels, significantly so in three, um, and. Below in two, it's grades five and six, uh, that are below the state on that one, and again, those other towns. Are in there.
And this is last year's.
This is last year's data, yeah, because it's the only one I can compare to other towns so far. So this is, blue bar is us last year, light blue bar, the darker blue is our preliminary results for this year. Um, grades five and six were below the state, um, last year, and there's some significant growth in grade five. Um, and grade six is similar to last year, our biggest concern for this one would be third grade, um, this year for ELA. And then this is the level three and four breakout. Again, these are preliminary results.
Is they, do they have data, like the state average for three and four?
Um, that we don't have anything, uh, for twenty twenty-five, because we don't have any state data yet. For twenty twenty-five.
It is available, right?
It is available, yeah, like for twenty twenty-four, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so this is science, um, again, the table on the left, town comparison was last year, twenty twenty-four. Um, we were below in fifth grade, above in eighth, significantly below in fifth grade, above in eighth. Um, and then if you look at the top one, that's our comparison to ourselves last year and our preliminary this year. I would assume we're going to outdo what we did last year in grade five, that's quite a difference. I can't imagine the kids that moved in are gonna make that much of an impact. Um, and then our preliminary science is down below with the breakout of level three and level four. So, and we use some new different programs, um, this year at middle school. Um, and did some, we used mystery science this year, and next year we're gonna be doing Open Sci Ed, which is a free science program. Um, that the middle school teachers were loving and we're bringing that to elementary as well. So that will be good to hopefully continue that progress. Um, this is our NWA, um, so this is again, computer adaptive, all grade levels take this, so this is K through eight. Uh, they take it in reading and math, we do three times a year. Um, and what we're doing is we're tracking achievements, so we're looking at, um. How do our students measure up to the national norm on this assessment? And then looking at growth over time, right, so each child, they have a score and they have a predicted or growth target. Um, that they're aiming for, so we're looking, did they meet that target, did they exceed that target, that type of thing. Um, and then we're looking at grade level achievement as well. So this is winter, so it's old data, we've already acted on this data, I can't wait to see what we're getting this week for results. Um, so what you're looking at here is our winter scores are dark blue on the left-hand side. Um, and then the national norm is on the right. Um, so if you look at this, you can see all grade levels were at or above the national norm, um, and then grades K, one, two, and four were significantly above. And these norms are changing, huh, um, they've just announced, so I don't know whether they're gonna rise or fall. Um, but they've done a whole new study and they do thousands and thousands of kids for these studies. Um, but they're going to be likely seeing the COVID effect piece, so. It'll be very interesting to see how these norms change and how we measure.
Does norm mean?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, yeah. Uh, that was math, right, this is reading. Um, so grades K through two and four through eight were above the national norm, um, grade three was not. Um, they were just below, and remember, that's also the grade level that I just showed you on SAS that didn't do as well. Um, so this, this group is not achieving as highly, and we've got two data points now showing us that. Um, so that's something that we'll have to work on acting on. Um, students in grades two and five were significantly above the norm. Um, significant is three ri- points, above three ri- points, I should say. Um, this is over the last three years, uh, looking at our winter growth. Um, so math, we, that's beautiful, I mean, let's just see that continue, right, that's what we're looking for. Um, don't often see something like that. Um, reading, great jump, you know, if you really look at it overall, um, our reading from year before last has jumped. Ten, ten percentage points of the kids who are meeting their target, that's what this piece is, the percentage of kids meeting their growth target. Um, so that's, that's decent growth there too.
What do we use for reading?
Uh, we have wonders, um, is our program K through six. Um, but our, we K to two, we also use Ufly, um, and Hegarty. Um, so that's for phonics, um, and that's, that's really our reading instruction, like teaching them to read. Is through Ufly and Hegarty. Which we just started a couple of years ago, so we're hopefully gonna start to see that effect as we move forward.
How often do we change the curriculum? It's not often, right?
No.
I was gonna, because I was gonna ask you, if it were to change, would they, would you expect it had to show up in maybe a year?
Yeah, well, you usually have an implementation dip.
You usually have two to three years. Fluctuation, dip.
Yeah, it's called the implementation dip.
It takes a while for it to.
Because the teachers are learning it too.
Exactly, well, and our wonders came in for us, um, during COVID. So we started a new program in COVID, so that, that was a little bit tricky. Um, and then we just started Ufly two years ago now, and Hegarty, we've had probably three years. Um, but Ufly were really doing to fidelity, and this is, we're just finishing year two, so you think about the kids in. K and one have now had that structure, thirty minutes every day that they're here, um, for those two years. So I think we're gonna start to see something from that too. Oh, one hundred percent, one hundred percent. Um, so the findings overall, basically in math, um, this is kind of just reiterating what I was just showing you. Um, our preliminary results for SAS for math show the percentage of students scoring three or above about the same as last year. Um, for NWA, everybody was above the norm, um, and we've got a four percent increase over last year, but again, that's winter data, it's old data now. Um, I really wanna look at our spring data. Um, same for reading, preliminary results show about two percent less than last year, but who knows that could be. That will likely change, um, either up or down. Um, for NWA, uh, we had grade three below the national norm and. Uh, our percentage meeting the growth target was a one percent decrease over the last year, but a ten percent increase over the year before. Um, science, um, grade eight was significantly above, grade five was significantly below. Um, and our preliminary results shows scoo- students, um, scoring about fifteen percent greater than last year. Which is great. So our priorities for this year, which I know I've shared with you before, um, are really looking at using our assessment data. Um, focusing on reading and math, um, to address any gaps, um, using small groups. And then our school-wide behavior expectations, um, really thinking about, um. Our culture and creating that culture, and we've done a lot of work on that this year, um, our staff during one of the PD times actually created a culture calendar and. Brought in some new activities, like we do town hall meetings now, which are kind of like the old whole school meetings. Um, we have staff outing of a baseball game happening tomorrow night. Um, uh, we have board game day, we have Friday morning, if you're here when the school day starts, everybody's dancing in the hallways, we've got music going. You know, we're trying to kind of do some of those fun things that don't take away from instruction, but can just infuse, like really just continue to help our culture grow. Um, let's see. So our action steps that were taken in the winter, um, is we reviewed our reports, um, to measure the effectiveness, made our adjustments. Teachers created classroom action plans, I meet individually with every teacher, and we talk about what their action plans are, what they're gonna do for. In some cases, specific students, in some cases, small groups, um, based on that winter data. Um, we continue our progress monitoring through DIBELS for reading and Acadiants for math, and then use our O-GAP items as well for math. Um, and then the action items still to take now is we need to do our final data review, we're doing that next Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, in grade level teams, and we'll be looking at SAS twenty twenty-five preliminary data. We'll be looking at the spring NWA that's finishing this week, uh, we'll look at our spring DIBELS and our spring Acadiants for math. Um, and just kind of do an overview and and start thinking about revising our instructional priorities for the next year. Um, likely with a stronger focus on reading. Um, and then consider implications for professional development for next year, and looking at our school day schedule and see if there are any. Tweaks that we wanna make there, um, in response to the data as well. And then there's what Stephanie loved for a picture, you can see it a little bit better there, which is fantastic. Any questions? It's a bright spot.
And I will say that I think that when you, when you start to implement Open Sci Ed K five. Next year, I think that will have a positive impact on reading performance.
Yeah, yeah.
Top button or the bottom button again?
Uh, do the like second one down, then it won't be like crazy bright, but. Thanks, Dana.
I mean, I know you guys eat, sleep, drink, dream about all those charts and kids and numbers and.
Can you, um, take the, where you show where we're deficient? Can you just have that for the retreat too, because I think that's a good. Data point for us to make a decision on that extra teacher.
Um, which data?
You know how they, where we were seeing where there's, where the kids are, are below the grade.
Okay, the grade three, okay, yep, yep.
There are two grade threes right now?
Yes, yep. There doesn't need to be more.
I just want that so that when we're all looking at it, we're looking at the dollars and we're saying, okay, where's the need? And I'd just like to prove it out in my mind.
Sure, absolutely.
I have a question that I just thought about. So it didn't specify it on there, but when you look at the data, do you separate the two, or the three sections of the classes, or how many sections there are of each class?
I can, yeah, I can look at that, um, in the, the platform that I look at, I can look down at individual students, everything. Um, yes, I can see the three different classrooms, um, and part of what we look at when, so teachers create the classes for the next year. Um, and they take lots of things into consideration when they're doing that, right, they're thinking about, you know, students reading and math ability. Um, the different, um, interactions that kids have had over time. Um, you know, they really consider all of that, so they see all of this data as well, and they try to make a balance in the classroom. So that we don't have one classroom that, you know, we're putting all the kids to do really well in math in this class. You know, and all the kids that are struggling in this class, because we wanna be careful not to homogeneously group, um, in that way, so. Yes, we do see that, and we look at, you know, I look at, you know, how different classrooms do over time too, I look at how teachers do over time. I look at how certain grade levels do over time, like for grade three, that's very unusual, like, very unusual. Grade three is usually our shining stars when we're looking at data. Um, so it, it's interesting to see that, right, so we've gotta look at, okay, what, what's going on there? Do we have a higher, um, percentage of students with disabilities in that, that realm, right? Do we need to look at things like that, you know, like, these are all the things that we look at, so it's not quite as simple as just looking at, okay, these percentages. We have to look at, especially when we're so small, who are the kids that we're talking about here, and do we need some different supports for some different kids? Do we need to change some programming for some, you know, specific kids?
Is it common that like a small number of kids can skew when you have small?
One hundred percent, yeah.
Small of the cohort.
I mean, in some of these grade levels, you're talking to two kids is ten percent. You know, it can really skew us.
One of the keys to look at is you wanna look at your longitudinal, in other words, how have your third grades? Because they didn't do that well this year. But you, as Becky said, you look, you go back five years and and s- say, oh, you know, everyone, they're going like this, and then all of a sudden you get a drop. That happens, it happens at different, it's just the makeup of a, of a, of a grade level sometimes. And then, but you still do what Becky said, you look at the, at the results, um, each student individually, say, okay. What is it that we're gonna need to do for grade four to support them so that they're, they're, they do, they're more successful? To support them so that they're, they're, they do, they're more successful.
And some of the things that I don't think that you all see behind the scenes is when Becky calls and says, can we, can we maybe send teachers to this professional development opportunity? I would imagine like the response of classroom is very much in response to some of the data that you're seeing.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I have no doubt that you guys are doing what you need to do. And if there's like any. Support to, um, they come to you and let you know, like.
Yeah, we do, we do everything we can to provide that support.
Yep, and that's, I mean, just about any meeting that I have individually with a teacher, the thing that I say before they walk out the door. Is there, is there anything that you need to make this happen, is there anything that I can do for you? You know?
Thanks for doing that. I mean, do it for yourself anyway, so. No, it's good to see.
More so next week, can I do it for myself? Um, oh, next is the barn lease agreement.
I got an issue.
Oh, okay.
On that.
On the.
Yep.
Barn lease, oh, okay, I thought you meant what we were just.
Under the first terms of lease, we could update those dates. From July first twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Huge. Just gotta go one year on each.
Yes.
So, yeah, we need to update, the property leased shall be the barn.
Which number?
Number two, premise and rent. We, we have to remove the land from it.
I can do that.
Um, it's the barn.
I'll just say, shall, shall be the barn.
Property taxes.
They pay.
They pay, but, so this is that they weren't paying.
Or they weren't billed.
They weren't billed, so now they're being billed. And they're being billed because they were said, it's not school use, but the land, the greenscape really is school use. So, can we revise the property taxes, um?
Do we have anything in the barn? We don't have anything.
A chair?
Um, I, I.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Could we get a chair?
Oh, you don't pay a chair in the barn?
I'm wondering if we can have them. Bill the taxes on the barn only and not the land. Um.
I don't think it works that way.
Yeah, I know, I gotta talk to the select board on that, how, cause it is school use, still.
Well, you own it, we own it, but we're leasing it.
But, they're paying taxes on the whole thing, so if they're gonna pay taxes on the whole thing, they won't want.
Well, you, normally you go and ask for a.
Abatement.
An abatement.
Yeah.
Yeah, payment, right?
Yeah.
Like when they assess your house, you think it's too high, you go in and say, well, I don't have four bathrooms, I may have three.
Okay.
You know, and you try to negotiate a lower, uh, tax bill.
That was my initial thought, so I'm gonna ask the select board, cause they're discussing abatements on Monday anyway. Um, the only. Access to the barn will be limited to the driveway, she asked.
I have that down here.
Yep.
In yellow, the leasing under conditions used of Lee's premise. I have Lee C shall only have full use of the barn.
Which page is that?
It's on the first page.
First page.
On the bottom. Access to the barn will be limited to the driveway. And then I put it for parking.
Yep.
I also made the same note.
She went, Colleen reached out and wanted to know if we could add. The use of the land behind the barn, I guess they store stuff behind the barn. Only.
Well. Like what?
I'm not being.
No, we, we gotta be careful because you would need a.
She says.
Lists of sorts.
Okay, here we go.
If it's compressors and stuff like that, you got free on gas, you gotta worry about.
Okay. Allotted the strip behind the garage, it is helpful to have that green space for just storage. And it doesn't look like it interferes with school use.
I'm looking at the barn, is it behind the barn or onto the right of the barn?
Behind the barn, behind. I would agree that it doesn't interfere with school use, we're not gonna go behind the barn. I don't know why you would store something outside though, cause what are you gonna store that?
I just think I've seen something out there, I just don't know.
Um, I would think storage would be boxes, but I'm wondering if they wanna put there via boat, a boat back there.
Now, do you want to be able to store items that are related to the business?
Yes.
And be specific about it, just like that level of specificity.
Yes, store items related to the use of the barn business.
I'll add that to the bottom. Yeah, items with non hazmat materials.
Yeah. Oh, it says here hazardous materials, um, in here.
We already have that.
We already have that.
Mm-hmm, but I mean for behind the barn.
How do you put it?
It's our lease.
Yeah. And then do we wanna give you the authority to send it with those changes, or do we wanna come back again and read it?
What I'd like to do is come back at the retreat with the new language and you guys sign off on it one last time. You know, review it and then we sign off on it.
Okay.
In case I miss something, like the days on the lease.
Sounds good to me.
I got the date on the top right.
All right, new business, we have some policies.
Yeah, these policies, uh, there's no vote needed, it's just.
Oh, okay.
Be able to say we, we reviewed them all. Or if you've seen them, not even reviewed them, that you've read them. And if everyone's read them, we can go to item B.
So item B is general assurances. Kimberly. So, we actually are all set with that, thank you for coming in.
It has to be in the minutes, it's not in the minutes, so you just have to state.
Oh, sure.
You just say that the chair aside.
I signed the general assurances that were presented to me by Kimberly.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Great.
Oh, do we want?
No, it's okay.
The next thing is you have to authorize me to hire non-teaching.
We do this every year, can't we authorize it like once for?
You could, all time.
Well, who knows what the next board.
Who knows what the next. Group of board members would like.
Yeah.
I, believe me, I'd love it, but I don't wanna, you know, it's just a formality. So we can hire custodians and pares.
Yeah, we wanna do that, for sure.
Food service if needed.
So we have a motion, we need it?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you wanna make it to be permanent or?
No.
No?
Just cause you.
Well, it only, I mean, it only matter if you, if the super changed, not the board, because the super's the one taking the action.
It's saying superintendent.
It's not superintendent, it's not saying me.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it would only matter if the superintendent position was somebody new. Cause even if the boards change, it's not the board that's actually making those hires.
We vote on it.
Or you don't vote on the, you guys only accept the recommendations for the certified stuff. This is just to affirm that this is how we hire people that weren't teachers. During the course of the summer and also over the year, school year.
I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire non-teaching personnel positions and accept all resignations over the summer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the manifest, does Heather have that? Is it, is it her turn? I was gonna put, I have to let myself a little bit. I just have to sign it.
I signed it, but.
So, yeah, you just make a motion to accept the manifest with the total amount.
Okay, I am motion to accept the manifest for the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six.
You state the time, the, 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 or I didn't hear it.
Uh, from May seventh to June fifth, twenty twenty-five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Expenditure report, I already got my questions from the board, um, to Bill, Cindy and Cheryl. I got those answers, they just wanted to know, which I thought was, there was a overage of a certain amount in special ed. And then. There was an overage and an under, and they, we hired a full-time behavior specialist. So.
And that was the over.
Yeah, and I thought.
But that saved us.
That was the case.
Thirty to forty thousand dollars by not having to contract it out.
Yeah.
And Candy has set the, the, the benchmark for that, cause we're doing that in Auburn and.
Makes sense.
Auburn? Auburn, I know.
Um.
We also, just on the expenditure report, we also. Yeah, Kimberly and I, um, along with the special ed director from Hooks, and with the Hooks at Budget Committee. Uh, a week ago, this past Monday, um, they wanted to meet with us, um, because they read the newspapers and watch the news. And were concerned about what our funding would be for the upcoming school year, uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six for federal funds. Um, we received our initial IDA allocation, uh, about a couple of weeks ago. And as you can see, our twenty-five, twenty-six projected allocation is slightly higher, about twenty-two dollars. Than this current year, which is a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a couple of months ago, Kimberly and I, and I believe I put it in my report, we were at a South Central Superintendent's meeting. Where Commissioner Edelblue, uh, explained that districts should probably not count on any Title II funding for next year. So that number, um, for Title II of sixteen thousand, we probably, if we receive anything, will be very little. Uh, Title I and Title IV, um, what, July first, Kim?
Mm-hmm. Um, Title I and Title IV, we're gonna submit our application, but we probably won't know the allocations until.
The summer.
Yeah, until mid-July, but probably more towards the end of July.
Now, our concern, and we've talked, talked about it here, is, you know, for this year, we're. We should be okay, but you add up, you know, it's a hundred, you know, if we lose, uh, Title II, just ballpark, it's a hundred and sixty. We got about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in federal grants that help support instruction for our students. Title I i- is not for our special needs students, it's for regular ed students for, uh, free and reduced. Uh, you, that's how they calculate the, uh, the funding mechanism is based off your free and reduce hot lunch. And I, as my last thing, I said to the Hooks at Budget Committee was, if this money goes away. We're gonna have to be looking to put it into the budget, not for twenty-five, twenty-six, but possibly for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And when we build our budget in a few short months, we're gonna be, um, making, we're gonna have to make certain assumptions. Those assumptions are, for example, will IDA be funded close to the hundred and twenty-one thousand, three seventy-six that they say we're gonna get for this year? Um, are we gonna get close to Title I? You know, we're gonna have to, because if you don't, um, one of the things that the other two districts have to do is take teachers out of IDA. But one of the decisions those boards are gonna have to make is do we take them out of IDA for our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget? With the, because if we don't get enough money, we won't be able to pay for those teaching positions.
We don't do that here.
No, we don't, I don't believe we have it.
Cause these are always unanticipated revenue.
Or, no, the, not, not IDA, these are federal grants.
Not IDA.
No, these are federal grants.
The only position, I'm thinking there's like a part-time in Title I.
Part-time title, and then our IDA, we, we removed, um, what was like a co- a contracted position? And we do still have some contracted positions in.
And those are, those are conversations we're gonna have to have at budget time. Um, because if that grant money doesn't come in and we haven't accounted for it, what do you do?
I just can't believe.
And I don't, and I don't have any answer, I'm, I, I don't know, and if anyone says they know, they, they, they don't know. That's, that's the only thing I know.
I did tell the budget committee we're okay for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, we're okay for, we're, our federal funding, we're pretty comfortable, uh, minus the, the Title II funds.
I might keep that out.
I have a question, cause I heard you say something, but it just, you mentioned the education commissioner. I know the current commissioner was nominated by the last governor, we have a new governor. Has he been renominated, or is he serving out a term?
Matter of fact, he, I think his retirement party was today, or tomorrow?
Uh, I think it's next week.
Or next week?
Yeah.
Um, no, Frank's retire, uh, well, he didn't get renewed, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know what his plans are, but the governor will be appointed and a commissioner.
I thought he was wanting to go back to the public sector.
I, I don't know.
Or private sector, that's why.
I, 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 no idea, but yes, we, there will be a new commissioner of it.
So, he's still serving out the remaining?
He's serving out his, his term.
Do you know when that ends, sooner?
Yeah, it's actually supposed to end, um, June thirtieth, yeah, same as us, yeah, fiscal year, yeah.
Think he gets appointed five-year term?
Yeah, yep, he did say that he might stay on at, just to basically like as a subcontractor, just to help with the transition.
It's a five-year term?
Governor points. I know, it's, it's kind of like, it's like a judgeship, cause a governor, you wanna give the person some. They don't have to be looking over their shoulder every two or three years.
Well, that's longer than the governor, so some governors may not get that.
I, I think that was a question in the election, now if you're elected, you know, would you, you know, stick with the commissioner or not?
Okay, um, next is policies.
Right, so these are all secondary policies?
Oh, nominations.
Oh, I thought so, did I miss that?
I don't miss that.
Checked it already, sorry. We have our superintendent nomination for.
I asked the board to accept, uh, the nomination of Madison Tortorello Bova, uh, for, uh, for an elementary position.
I move that we approve the superintendent's nomination of Madison Tortorello Bova, did I say it right?
Yes.
As an elementary teacher.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, can I get a motion to amend the agenda, cause we have to do resignations unfortunately.
Um, I make a motion that we, um, add in resignation to the agenda. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye. Unfortunately, um, uh, Chris Moore, uh, will be leaving us, uh, in early July. Chris, uh, he's been with us for a number of years, seems like forever.
How long have you been here? Four years?
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Seems longer than that.
Does seem longer.
It does, it seems like Chris is always here. Um, but, um, he has some things that he has to do with his family and stuff, so we wish him well, and he's done a great job for us here. We'll miss him.
He's gonna stay with us through the month of July.
Yes. That helps.
Very much. Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
You gotta accept the resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
So second was Brett.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now policies.
Now policies.
Now policies.
These are all secondary, nothing's changed except for one of them, the policy, JJIC. There was some, um, language changes, basically the policy NHSBA gave us when this law came out, that we had to create a policy. There were some small minor language changes that were made during the policy committee meeting, and they accidentally got left out as a first read, so. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right, then.
My, my only thing.
Yeah.
Um. The second part.
Yeah.
Does that, do we really need that language?
The third paragraph.
It just seems a little harsh.
It's, it's in accordance with the law.
Is that what New Hampshire state law has?
If they have similarly, I don't have it in front of me, but, I mean, everything in this policy is in accordance with the law, that's why this policy came about. Most, most of it's just the NHSBA policy.
Cause we, so we, they're gonna submit a birth certificate. Do we need to add like the immutable that was observed and no- noted? I mean, it's kinda, the way it was written was a little less, uh.
Well, I would prefer to keep it in, but.
I just, I don't know if we're like. But, anybody else?
Maybe it sounds good.
Do you think more?
I agree.
Leave it in.
You have to approve the second.
I mean, you can vote against the policy.
I like the first one personally, just, I mean, it still says the same thing, just not as, um, uh, cause I didn't see this till today and. Yeah, so we might have to just vote on them.
So, yeah, cause that was amended anyway, so I could do that separate.
Okay, do that one separate.
Well, I'll do that one first and then I'll do, you know, so I move to approve the second read, the amended policy, JJIC.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
And then I move to adopt this secondary policies, JFAB, admission of tuition in non-resident students, JEB, entrance age, JLDBA, behavior management intervention, KED, grievance procedure, EBCF, pandemic epidemic, GCEB, professional staff recruiting, and LIBA assessment.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an opportunity for the public to address the board. Yes, Carol. It's been a while.
Carol Batfield, or five thirty-one. Is fifth grade for next year also gonna rotate, just like it was grouped in with middle school this year, will that continue?
The current plan is for fifth and sixth to be a team just like seventh and eighth are.
Okay, and there's the, I think you said the one-ten, one-hundred-and-ten thousand for, like, if there was a new teacher hired. So, is it just a choice, like, I know Stacy said there's like really an increase in kids that might need the early intervention and extra paras were needed? Is that just like a one-time fund, like, we can't do both, we can't hire paras and a new teacher, is that accurate?
No, they'd, they'd be separate. Special ed require, if we had to hire additional paras, it would put us over what we have budgeted, cause we budgeted for X number of paras for next year. But if the need increases, then we have to, we have to meet that need.
So, if we didn't have that third teacher?
Similar to the, the scenario, said if we got an extra twenty for kindergartners, we'd have to hire another teac, it's the same.
Oh, right, you hit, you hit overage and then, okay.
You have to, you have to get the support.
So theoretically, if we had a whole bunch of fifth graders come in, we could just get that third teacher?
We have open positions, so right now we contract for them.
Right, okay, so if we, if we don't have that extra third, fifth, and behavior issues pop up, but we have an increase in intervention that's needed in kindergarten, we're gonna be kind of, we really need those paras then?
We would get.
Would lighten it.
That would look like.
We, we, if, if a child, if we need additional services to support an IEP, we have to provide the service.
And then you'd go forward with.
It's not, it's not an option.
And you'd be able to access funding then, that way?
Well.
Well.
Maybe.
Access, or?
No, we would, we would.
We would have to provide with an IEP.
We would go over, we would go over budget on the, on the.
That's what I was curious, okay, that was it.
We do have an, an emergency special ed fund, but I think the only reason we would need to use that is if we were, if our budget wasn't a deficit. Overall, cause we are a bottom-line budget.
I'd have to check how it's written, but you can, at least the way it's, they've written in Hooks at, in Auburn, they're broad enough where if it's a special ed expense, you can, you can go into it if you had to.
So even if you only were overdrawing your special ed lines in the budget, and you wanted to do that, you could.
You could do that, to balance out.
Then the next year, you're gonna have to warrant article to fill the. Exactly.
Well, in other words, at the start of the school year, if.
Depends on how the rest of the budget looks.
Hypothetically, if we needed two additional paras, we could go into the special ed trust fund to, to pay for it, but we know we have it, so we'd have to build it into the budget, because we'd have an increase in students needing services, so I, theoretically, the budget would pass.
I mean, there is a little emergency money there, so.
It's there too, cause you, we could have a student move in tomorrow that's already placed residentially, and that's.
Yep.
That's the nightmare scenario.
Would take a little bit on us.
Yeah.
That's the nightmare scenario.
And then can we go to the state, I mean, is there any, like, no, catastrophic aid wouldn't.
Catastrophic aid is, the catastrophic aid's down to sixty percent of what districts submit. It used to be ninety, ninety-five percent funded, for revenues now, we're in the mid to low sixties.
All right, well.
Good news.
Fingers crossed.
Just a pair of good news tonight.
All right, so now we have, we do have a reason to go into non-public tonight. RSA ninety-one A, three sections, two A.
That's correct.
I got it.
You did.
Can you do a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Before we do that, may I take a minute to return my lease for the coffee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
We just need to notate that we discussed the.
CEA.
CEA, uh, contract.
No action was taken.
No action was taken. Informational items for upcoming agenda, NHSBA call for resolutions, what's up?
That is, if the board has, um, any resolutions that they would like the organization to consider to advocate for legislation on.
Oh.
Um, for example, Hooks it, uh, just the other night, there, there's two things that they're, they're looking at is, uh, impact fees to, uh, make it easier for school districts to access, uh, impact fees for maintenance issues like roofs, boilers, things of that nature. And, oh gosh, now I can't forget, I can't remember the second one, but they, there's two that they're, they're gonna put forward to see if they can get legislation.
So they, you know, they usually have like a meeting.
Yeah, they have a, they have an assembly in early autumn, I believe.
School board, member school board, small state go and they, they vote on it, so.
They vote, district, you know, Hooks it has the, the following resolution, and then they decide whether or not to vote it up or down.
Usually.
Yeah.
Uh, we've never sent anybody that.
August meeting? So we're in June right now? Oh my gosh, this is our last meeting.
We meet in September.
So we're doing September? Alright, let's see, what our next is September fourth. We usually, yeah, let's see, when does school start?
They agreed they wanna meet in September, that our September meeting.
I'm just thinking about what needs to be on there, then we got a handbook rule. Oh, for, we need handbook on the next meeting.
I mean, Becky, is that too late to do September?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it probably should've been on this one.
If they retreat, will you be ready?
Uh, we can probably do that. We can push that out.
I can't believe it's June.
Can you get it ready?
I think so.
Cause I'm going out for surgery on July twenty-third, so I'll, I'll be up and walking by third.
That's the only one I can think of that would be time sensitive.
Could put one in August.
No. So we don't need July, August meetings, September fourth's the next, well, great. I can't even think about what we would need to talk about.
Who's on the negotiating team?
Me.
Okay, we're meeting in August.
Who was on it last year?
Christina.
I think Meredith was.
I did the support staff.
Matt did the last teacher contract.
Matt, Christina, not Christina, was it just Matt?
I don't think Christina went to that.
No, it's Matt and Christina.
Christina came to the, um, SESP, uh, one of the extension conversations we had.
Okay, so adjourn, anybody?
Move to adjourn?
Second?
Have this all, yeah.
Yeah, yikes.
That's an affirmative.